...of Streetlight Special Assessment District Number 222 for Woodlawn Street. The public hearing was set at the September 19th Regular Board Meeting. I declare the public hearing open at 7:07 PM. If there's residents that would like to speak in regards to the street lighting petition, now is the time. All right, the purpose of this street light petition is to put streetlights on Woodlawn. And letters were sent to all of the residents that own properties and live there. So this is a public hearing to see if there's any opposition or people want to speak in favor of it. Clerk Rowe, have you received any feedback?
I've only received two positive feedbacks. They were via email. And I know that the petitioner is here tonight and had a lot of support in her community, even the support of some rental homeowner properties, which we are thankful for.
All right, well, hearing no public comments. We may have one, just a moment.
Yes, I'm in favor of it, as I'm a resident of Woodlawn Avenue.
All right. Thank you. Hearing no further comments, I'm going to close the public hearing at 7:09. Clerk Rowe?
I have Resolution Number 2023-16, the creation of a streetlight special assessment district number 222 Woodlawn Street. Whereas it is being requested of the Board of Trustees for the creation and establishment of the special assessment district number 222, for the purpose of defraying said costs of street lighting by special assessments against the property especially benefited. And whereas the township clerk requested of Detroit Edison proposed plans describing the streetlight improvement and locations of said improvements with an estimate of said costs. And whereas on August 22nd, 2023, Brandon Farron of Detroit Edison Community Lighting Group prepared and submitted proposed plans to install street lighting for Woodlawn Street, Ipsalene Township, consisting of 25 parcels, which said plans include, intrailia, the installation of six 14 direct buried fiberglass poles with black finish and six 64-watt LED colonial-style luminaries, with the cost of said improvements being approximately, the total construction costs are $28,744.70. The total lamp charges for three years, $5,209.20. The contribution cost minus three years of revenue, $23,535.50. And the total annual lamp charges being $1,736.40. Whereas on September 15th, 2023, the township clerk received notification from the township assessor that the cost of providing six streetlights for Woodlawn Street, Ipsalene Township, consisting of 25 parcels, which said plans include, intrailia, the installation of six 14 direct buried fiberglass poles with black finish and six 64-watt LED colonial-style luminaries. Construction costs of $23,535.50 for the installation will not be included in the special assessment district and will be paid for by Ipsalene Township. Will be $69.46 per parcel for a three-year period thereafter, the cost will be estimated of $69.46 per parcel for street lighting, reflective of the current rates set by DTE as well as electric usage for the year. Whereas the township clerk has given notice to each record owner or party of interest in the property to be assessed by first-class mail addressed to the recorded owner or party at the interested address shown on the tax records, at least 10 days before October 17th, 2023, public hearings setting forth the district affected in said petition, place and purpose of said public hearing to allow any interested person an opportunity to voice any objection which may be offered against creating a said district. And whereas the township clerk has also published in a newspaper of general circulation at the time, place and purpose of said public hearing and the district affected thereto. And whereas on October 17th, 2023, the Charter Township of Ipsalene held in a public hearing to hear any objections which may be offered against creating a special assessment district. Now therefore be resolved that the special assessment district number 222 be created for the purpose of providing six streetlights for Woodlawn Street, consisting of 25 parcels. Be it further resolved that the township board accepts the plans and estimate of costs presented by Detroit Edison for Woodlawn Street, consisting of 25 parcels, which said plans include, intrailia, the installation of six 14 direct buried fiberglass poles with black finish and six 64 LED colonial-style luminaries. Construction costs of $23,535.50 for the installation will not be included in the special assessment district and will be paid by Ipsalene Township. Will be $69.46 per parcel for a three-year period thereafter, said costs shall be an estimated $69.46 per parcel for street lighting, reflective of the current rates set by DTE as well as current electrical usage for the year. Be it further resolved that the township supervisors shall make a special assessment upon all lands and premises contained herein to defray the expense of lighting of said streets. Be it further resolved that the township board shall herein annually determine, honor before September 30th of each year, the amount to be assessed in a said district for lighting said streets and shall direct the township assessor to levy such amounts therein. Be it further resolved that when the special assessment role has been prepared and filed in the office of the township clerk, before said assessment role has been confirmed, the township board shall appoint a time and a place when it will meet, review, and hear any objections to the assessment role. Be it further resolved that the township board shall give notice of said hearing and filling of the assessment role in a matter prescribed by statute. I would so move Resolution 2023-16.
Support. Peterson. Motion by Rowe, support by Peterson, to approve the creation of the special assessment district. I did speak with DTE today, and it won't be until the beginning of next year to get them installed. They have to order it first and have it delivered, but they're going to try to get them in as quick as they can. And we really thank the community for bringing this forward in a quick manner. Like the resolution said, the township pays for the actual cost of purchasing and installing it. And what's the special assessment levy is for just the operations of and maintenance of the streetlights. Any other questions or comment? Hearing done. When we create special assessment districts, we have to do roll call votes. Swanson?
Yes.
Newman?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Rowe?
Yes.
Stumbo votes yes. Eldridge?
Yes.
And Hunter?
Yes.
The motion is approved and the special assessment district is created. The next item on the agenda is public comments. Remember, there's three minutes per person. And you can also speak on every agenda item as well. Are there any, if you would give your name or you're a township resident or not, that would be appreciated? Are there any public comments? Let's go to the microphone.
Is this thing on? Okay. Hi, I'm Dirk Mayhew from Ann Arbor, not a constituent. I work closely with a lot of clerks across the state and in the county, and I study elections really closely. And I'm here to urge the trustees to reconsider your decision to go it alone in next year's elections. It's not too late. I believe the deadline is the 25th, 150 days ahead of the uncertain date, but that's part of the reason I'm here. There's a lot of uncertainty next year. We literally do not know which day the presidential primary is going to be held. There's a lot of new rules. There's new ballot lists. There's nine days early voting. Every other township clerk in this county has joined forces to try to navigate that and come up with a common plan. How do you deal with this? All of their voters, their constituents, will be treated the same. Ipsy's voters and constituents, you're going to have your own path, and that's risk. I'm urging the trustees to reconsider that decision now. Because if anything unique happens in Ipsy Township, people will be looking at it, did it happen in Freedom or Manchester or whatever? If it's unique to this, they won't ask, what's up with the clerk? They'll ask, why did you guys go it alone? So I'm suggesting you reconsider that now. Again, there's time. And we know that the county can absorb that. They already have a plan that included Ipsy Township. That was their mainstream plan. It's less cost. We know that combining is going to be nowhere more expensive than going it alone. And in case it needs to be said, my team trusts your clerk. When we presented issues in previous elections to your clerk, she immediately addressed them. So we know that her heart's in the right place. She cares about elections. I know it's a hassle for the county, but I also know that our excellent deputy clerk, Ed Gollumvievsky, administered elections in Ukraine. He can handle the late change. It's less risk. It's less cost. Every other municipality in the county followed the advice of their clerk. Every other township in the county is joining forces. Ipsy's going to lose the benefit of those decades of experience, dozens of eyes on it, navigating these new processes in a common way, all of us in it together. Please reconsider your decision. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other public comments?
Hello? My name is Lauren Gabory. I live at The Villas, right off of Gulfside here in Ipsy Township. And I'm here to speak about the conditions at the McKinley Properties in the township. There are four of them in Ipsy Township. At my previous apartment, I was stalked and harassed by another tenant, so I had to get out quickly and find alternative housing. And I found that the only place I could afford to live were McKinley Properties. And I didn't know at the time that you shouldn't rent from them. No one told me that. And I figured I could settle for paying a large chunk of my income towards that rent because I just needed a safe place to live. But since I've moved in, the costs of that rent, plus the random fees that they add on every month, has stacked up to about 60% of my income. I've been delaying doctor's appointments, dental appointments, car maintenance, you name it. I haven't been able to handle it, just because I need somewhere to live. Someone making minimum wage would be paying about 80% of their paycheck to, just to live in one of these apartments. And you'd think for all of that money, these would be well-maintained units, but they are not. If you take a look at our flyer, you can see there's mold. We have issues with pests, cockroaches, flooding, standing water, ceilings caving in. There's so many issues that I've had and that other tenants have had as well. My building specifically has a mold problem that they've refused to address. They just ignore my emails. I never get a response. So we are asking you to urge state officials to end the ban on statewide rent control. Right now, there is a statewide ban on rent control so that no municipality can implement any controls in that way. And both Pontiac City Council and the Ipsalene City Council have gotten on board and urged our state legislators to overturn that ban. Another thing you can do is to help enforce codes from, you know, the health and safety part of things. Make sure that McKinley is upholding its duty to make sure that these are safe places to live. We can't keep letting them get away with this. It's really outrageous and criminal. And because these are the cheapest places to live in the township, they know we have nowhere else to go. And so they just let these buildings crumble, and they don't do basic maintenance to keep them safe. So we really are asking for your help to improve our conditions. Thank you for your time.
Hi, I'm also from the McKinley Tenants Association, here to talk about our conditions and our very, very high rent. So the apartments that you have in Ipsalene Charter Township is Villas, Aspen Chase, Schooner Cove, and Roundtree. So this is thousands of your constituents. We are in a crisis because we can't afford to pay rent. I know several people who have been evicted, one person just on Saturday, who actually ended up being homeless now because she moved her stuff into a storage place and is now couch surfing. This is really a crisis. I personally have chewed through my savings over the past four years that I've been in McKinley. I've paid over $77,000 in rent. We pay much more, for the most part, than even homeowners in this area. And the rents have gone way higher than inflation. My grievance against McKinley is that it seems to me their business model is to buy properties that are basically crumbling, not invest in them, but just charge the quote-unquote "market rate" for rent because this is a really nice area to live in, and not ever do any of the expensive upgrades like to plumbing or electricity. They just let them crumble. They don't clean the common areas. Our apartment complex doesn't even have, well, our property manager actually manages another property. We have zero office hours per week, and there's just literally nobody ever walks through the common areas. There's mold. My voice has been scratchy for six months, and I think it has something to do with the air quality in my apartment. And it's just, this is not right. The owners of McKinley, you know, it's a private business, they're multimillionaires. And they say and they act like they're like great contributors to the community, and this is just not true. And so we're trying to shine a light on this. In addition to coming to local boards, this is actually the fourth local government that we've been to, in addition to Ann Arbor City Council, Ipsy City Council, and Pittsfield Charter Township. We're also working with people across the state to try to change the state law, because right now it is prohibited in Michigan to have local rent control policies. And so we're trying to attack it from both ends. We just, yeah, we ask you to do what you can with your building inspectors, local issues, and also to consider passing a resolution supporting reversing the ban on rent control. It's kind of a convoluted way to say it. And I'd like to give you a resolution that Ipsy passed that was also modeled on the Pontiac City Council resolution. Thank you.
Just by a show of hands, the people who had issues, have you been called to the township for ordinance inspections or rental inspections? Just, do you know that you can call the township and get an inspection for any property that you're renting? And then we can, I will update them tomorrow on the issues that are being raised, I heard on The Villas. But if you contact us, we can send someone out to inspect. It's public health and safety, and we have a rental ordinance, and they come out very quickly. We had someone call Friday. They had a leaky ceiling. It was at McKinley. But they went out that day and identified the issue, the building department did, and our rental inspectors. So if, John, maybe you can get some addresses for people. If you want us to come in and do an inspection, give us your contact information, and we'll report it tomorrow, right away.
I also live in Aspen Chase. Now, I had a neighbor who stayed next building over. Now, he passed away. Section 8 was paying half his rent. What my thing is, I seen on his door, it was eviction notice. I took the bituary up there and told him, this man passed away. They said, we know we was letting him know. I'm trying to figure, how you evict a dead person, and how you going to let him know that he still owe you money when he's dead? Then my other neighbor said, the inspector came out to her apartment, said she shouldn't be living there because it's 14-wire. I think that whole McKinley apartment has 14-wire. Because when we, in my kitchen, if we plug up a deep fryer and had a microwave, it cuts off the power. And I don't think they fixed none of the wires in the apartments. I think all the apartments have 14-wire. Because everybody out there saying how their lights flickering and all that. And I don't know if they waiting for somebody to catch on fire, to do something? I don't know how they go fix the problem. Then my thing is this, I have a 13-year-old daughter. I'm not saying when people get out of jail, they shouldn't have nowhere to stay, they shouldn't have a freaking chance of life. But they use some of the apartments as halfway houses for people when they get out. I ain't got a problem helping them. But there's a bunch of kids in that neighborhood, and it's already been killing over that neighborhood. A lot of crackheads walking around through the neighborhood. Now they trying to get a person in front gate, but all the people who started the troubles are already in there. So they already got to go to court because they didn't fix our tub. They finally had somebody, they really didn't fix it. They just covered the hole up. And the guy that was doing it, I asked him, I said, you don't seen somebody apartment with a tub that actually need a new tub? He said, yeah, but they just paid me to just patch it up. That's all they do, just patch up thing. They don't actually really fix it. Now, if y'all do something, I don't know if they have to fix the whole apartment complex, and I don't know where people going to be going, or were they willing to put people in a hotel just to get it fixed right? But one day, one apartment's going to catch on fire.
Okay.
Hello? Okay, can you hear me? I have, I know for a fact that Aspen Chase is like that, and Section 8 is working with McKinley probably, because I know for a fact, a young lady who has Section 8, and it's supposed to be inspected before they move in, and they okayed it, and she moved in, all her cabinets were waterlogged, the dishwasher was backing up, her refrigerator didn't even work. I don't even know how the inspection passed without the refrigerator not working. It was leaking in the bathroom. She had bugs and whatnot. And they didn't do anything. Section 8 didn't do it. They approved it. And I see it all the time on Ipsalene Facebook, something really, really needs to be done. And politics is politics, and McKinley is their moneymaker. They contribute, you know? And they need to be shut down or fixed or something. It's horrible. And she had a two-bedroom, and she was paying like over $1,000. Even with Section 8, that's a lot for waterlogged cabinets, and I would never pay, you can't, it's ridiculous. And that was like maybe a year or two ago. So it's horrible. Horrible.
That was Aspen Chase again, right?
Yes.
Is that what I heard?
Yes.
Hi, so I'm a resident at Schooner Cove Apartments, and have been there close to 12 years now. And I have went, had times when I moved there and I was paying probably zero rent because I wasn't working and had just got a divorce like three years in. So finally got myself together, able to pay most of my rent. Section 8 paid a portion, decent portion. But now with the rents going way up, their portion is barely over $100, and I'm paying close to $1,600 on my own. For what? The appliances are old, carpet is beat up. I asked them to clean the carpet or replace it. They told me, well, they waited and waited and waited and kept stalling. So I called back, you know, one or the other, clean it or replace it, can you please? They finally told me, no, we can't do either or. You have to go through whoever they use, which is one-way carpet cleaning place or something. And if you mention McKinley, you'll get a discount. Who does that? First of all, I'm pretty sure, I think it's in my lease that they have to maintain, of course, you know, because normal wear and tear, when I leave, you're going to try and charge me for whatever, what you don't consider a normal wear and tear. But my thing is, the rent is just outrageous. I can barely live. I got a 17-year-old daughter, excuse me, and a 20-year-old son that's still at home, you know, only working part-time. And then they factor in his little income, which is, a 20-year-old, come on, working part-time. That's not a big, you know, thing to, you know, contribute for the household. But like I said, the rent is just sky-high, and it's so hard to manage when you have car notes and this and that. They don't factor in your other, you know, expenses, is what I'm saying. And it's just tough right now, you know, with food being very high too. So that's just all I wanted to say about that. And hopefully we can come to some kind of, something for people to live better and to be able to afford, you know, where they live, at least make it livable. And if you want to charge that much rent, make it worth it, you know? Because it is not. The appliances are old. I'm just not going to keep going on, but yeah, that's it.
Thank you. Any other comment?
Excuse me. Me on the other hand, I want to count my blessings. I've worked hard for everything I've gotten, but I want to thank the board up here for trying to make my life even better every day. And I want to thank the fire department. I wish the police department was here because I say thank you from the bottom of my heart. And everybody stay safe. This is a crazy world, and yes, we could do more for ourselves. If you don't like something, you move on, or you try to change it to be more positive. And you try by teaching our youth to grow up and be better. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Other comments? I do want to say that John Hines is getting everyone's address and contact information. We will address the issues, especially flickering lights, it's a fire safety, we have to, I mean, that's a media that we have to check in to that. And any mold, anything to do with the existing living conditions, we will get someone over there. That's something we can do tomorrow. You know, and you need to just contact us and let us know. And I don't have a card here, but I can get one in my office real quick. But please let us know, because you're right. Everyone's got to be held accountable. And the living conditions, the pictures that you have presented are not acceptable. I want you to know that McKinley is not the only apartment complex owner that we have had issues with, and we're very aggressive with our legal team because we want people to be in a safe, clean environment. So we will do what we can immediately on that in order to address. And if we could get the word out, maybe we can do a mailing or something to let residents know, if you have concerns, call us. Because we want to address them sooner than later. So we'll do that immediately. And I normally don't talk or respond, but I do want you to know that we can do that and will do that. Any other public comments? All right, thank you. Thank you, everyone who came out. We appreciate it. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda for the minutes of August 15th, work session, regular meeting, minutes of the September 19th work session, regular meeting, that were tabled at the October 3rd meeting.
Madam Chair, I am prepared to go through tonight the minutes. Our office has tried to accommodate the changes and requests that the boards made. Lisa and I talked to, or Lisa talked to MTA today. I had talked to, or Lisa talked to, um, MTA today. They, you know, have recommendations about minutes when they refer back to, um, the MCL. They state that the meeting minutes should be approved at the next meeting, so for example, August, October third should be approved tonight, um, and then available to the public five days after that. So, I'm happy to go through each of them tonight, um, and make whatever changes. They did also have a suggestion of just making the changes in public together, you know, so that everyone's clear on what it is. Um, they go so far as to suggest that you make a motion, for example, like if I wanted something added about the consent agenda, I would say, um, I would so move to add, um, you know, what I said about the consent agenda related to this, and then I would need a support. So, that was their sort of general recommendation, but I have, um, the meeting minutes, and I can pull them up, and we can go through them in person. Now I can switch screens with Lisa, if you guys just let me know what meeting you want to start on.
What's a pleasure of the board.
Madam Chair, just discussion if I could, and then I'll make a decision. I understand the process that minutes have to be approved, uh, basically at the next board meeting. At this point, we have not approved the fifteenth, we have not approved the nineteenth table, I guess, and the third, we, I guess we can actually do that one tonight, but I think it, it's so large, the two, couple packages is so large, that I understand the ruling of the process, you know, it should be done legally, but how can you make a judgment? We'll be here, and, and if we have to be here all night, we'd be here all night, but I think to actually read it, uh, and that, I mean, all three, let the board to really look at every statement. If it's possible, can we, uh, table to do a special meeting to update and approve all these, uh, August fifteenth, September nineteenth, and October third minutes? Legally, can we do this? And, um, that's my question.
Um, Madam Chair, if I can, I would just, I'll just share what I learned from the MTA, um, as well as Lisa, and it's basically just that the OMA does not allow any like space for tabling of minutes. I know that since I've been on the board, that's, we occasionally table minutes. Um, I'm not an attorney, I don't know if Attorney Winters has any more to say about that, but, um, in the Open Meetings Act, MCL, it allows for the next meeting for you to make edits, make changes, and they should be, you know, in approvable form then, and then at the five days after that meeting, they should be available to the public.
So, was the, uh, uh, August fifteenth and the nineteenth table?
Mm-hmm.
So, we, by law, we couldn't do that, so.
I'm, again, I'm not.
Yeah, I hear you. Um.
Mr. Winters?
So, question.
Well, I've always tabled minutes, but I don't, maybe it's incorrect.
I guess I'm, I'm somewhat confused with what the conversation was with MTA. I was, I was not part of that conversation, so I'm not sure exactly what the question was that was posed to MTA. All I can speak of right now is that when minutes come back to the board, and the board, I'm just paraphrasing me, certain specific requests to be made to those minutes, and those requests were not made to the satisfaction of the board, I don't think you are required to approve something that's not in the board's opinion to be in approvable form. So, again, I'm not, I can, I'll be glad to have a conversation with MTA, uh, as to what their recommendations are, but what I understand anyway is, uh, there's been awful lot of conversations or emails about the, uh, uh, at this table about what has to be included in the minutes, so, um, I don't think I'm going to recommend the board be forced to approve something the board's not comfortable approving.
Madam Chair, and I just, you know, I, we have tried to make the changes that were requested of us. We have all worked on it in our office, and at this point, I feel like if we want changes to be made, we should do them together here tonight, so that everyone's on the same page about what exactly it is that needs to be changed.
Yes, Trustee Swanson.
I have no, um, problem working through them together. I think that suggestion is, is a great idea. I do have an issue with sitting, because I, I agree with Trustee Peterson, it's gonna take a time, and we have had a lot on our agendas lately, partly probably because of the one meeting situation, so a lot gets put in. Our packets are five hundred pages or more, a thousand for one of the meetings that we're talking about. So, the other thing that I'm, I'm no expert, I haven't talked to MTA on this, but when I was the Park Commissioner Secretary for twenty years, um, I understand too that you gotta have minutes, and they have to be approved, but, um, part of that is just having them available. At no point in time at this time have any of those meeting minutes not been available to the public if they wanted to see them. Um, we actually had one resident last time kind of admonish us for, um, the way, the format they were in, so I feel like we should look into it. I don't want to be pressed to approve something that, um, that, that I don't feel comfortable approving, but I also want to make it clear that we aren't hiding any minutes from anybody. If anybody wanted to see them, they've been available, um, as soon as they were put up. So, I know there's a timeframe, they've got to be put up after a meeting, not even the approval, like they're supposed to be prepared and ready for the public to see within a certain amount of time after a meeting. So, I'd have to learn more about them telling us that we have to approve something, because what if we're in a place where we disagree? That, that, are they saying we just have to approve it when we're not in agreement over something? That doesn't make a lot of sense to me. So, I would be in favor of, um, what Trustee Peterson is suggesting, with the understanding that that's the only thing that we're gonna do, and if it's a meeting, it would be posted. If anybody wanted to come and listen to us go over it, they could do that, but again, all the meetings that we're discussing right now, and we had a large discussion at the last meeting, um, audio's not available for that at this point right now. So, it wasn't the last time I looked. Um, so, we, we are at a problem space with minutes. That would be fair, at, at least from my perspective, we're at a problem space, and, um, and this has nothing to do with the clerk's office or saying something about, because I don't want people to say that, um, I don't want employees, anybody put into the middle of it. We are not at a common, shared understanding about what's getting put in, what's not getting put in. Verbatim looked a little better this last time, but without audio, there's no way to go back and see is that really verbatim, so I, I would be in favor of what Trustee Peterson is suggesting, and I have no problem going over it line by line if we need to together.
Madam Chair, I just want to clarify, I'm on the, it is, the audio is posted today. I, it's up right now on the website, um, and I appreciate your feedback. Um, it is a, it is the clerk's office that, that this impacts. I mean, I don't single-handedly do the minutes myself, and, you know, until the la- until August fifteenth meeting, there haven't been these real big issues with our meeting minutes, so I just, it's peculiar to me that, that after that meeting, you know, we've had now three sets of minutes that it sounds like might be tabled or put off, and I'd be definitely, I would encourage all of you to reach out to MTA and read the resources they have, and I would even be willing to have them come, you know, to a session to, I don't know, discuss best practices as a, as a board.
I think Mr. Winters stated you would meet out, reach out to MTA as well?
It's requested by the board, but I'm, I'm sure, I don't know if what the question is, it's going to be answered by the MTA.
What I'm hearing though is to have a, a meeting just to go over the minutes. Is that what I heard? Two, I've heard two, word by mercy.
Madam Chair? Oh, oh. What I, what I don't understand is, were the minutes taken before the August fifteenth meeting in the same, they didn't seem to be in the same format, which, you know, made it easier to understand before August fifteenth, and with the, uh, volume of information that took place that day, uh, and, and, and the different quotes, uh, by people, to me, the only way to reconcile that is to have the audio available to, to reconcile with what's on the, uh, what was taken on paper, because that was incorrect. Uh, the way it was, the format, and some of the, uh, words, and some of the meanings, and, and not to, you know, put you on the spot, but to, to see that is not reflective of our township, so to put anything out there like that and to have it as official is, is not right. And so, to me, what, what was, when it was done that way, and now to, to say in effect that we must make a decision today, I, I don't, I, I'm, that's where my confusion comes in, because it, if it was, I don't know, if it was done a different way, then all the ones that were done before, all the minutes before, were not an issue, because they seemed to reflect what had taken place, but with that particular one and, and the future ones, there seems to be some sort of disconnect, and, and that's why I'm confused, that we have to go over this for these, for these meetings, because the ones before seemed to be okay. So, is, has it been, was it a different method used, or, um, because the volume of the, uh, August fifteenth was just so much that, and, and, and to read some of it, it, it didn't make much sense. So, I, I guess I'm just, I'm confused as to, if, if any correct, well, I know corrections had been made, but if the corrections that could have been made, had been made from August fifteenth, I guess, I'm, I'm, that's where my confusion comes in.
Madam Chair, if I could just speak to the methods that were used to answer John's question. Sorry, I just wanted to respond to your question. So, the method that has been used for all of these meeting minutes have been the same. The same person that did the July eighteenth meeting minutes, did the August fifteenth minutes, did the September nineteenth meeting minutes. Um, how we do the minutes is that we listen to the audio while it's being, like we type a synopsis of what we hear in the audio. Um, I've heard specific parts needed to be verbatim. Um, those were done verbatim by someone in my office, and those were done this time, and there was still a question of, are those really verbatim? And they truly were. They were listened to and typed out, and hours are spent doing that. So, the process that we do in our office for the meeting minutes has been the same process for the, you know, seven years I've been on this board. The audio's listened to, and they're typed as they are being done. Um, and, you know, anyone who does the meeting minutes in my office can speak to that process.
So, oh, real quick, so the, the first version that we all saw, was that verbatim, taken down verbatim?
No, the first, all of the versions of like, original versions of the draft minutes, they're, they're not verbatim unless those specific things are requested to be. Stan asked for something to be verbatim for the police services. We went back and did that verbatim. There was some request for Attorney Winters' portion to be done verbatim. We've now went back and done that verbatim. So, if those specific things are asked, we, we have been willing to do that, um, but we've done all of that, and now we're still here on the minutes.
Madam Chair? Trustee, I'm Stunner, is that?
Yeah, no worries. Um, so, um, Heather, I just want to ask, and, and, and if you said it, I, I may have missed it, so I apologize, but why, why must the minutes be approved tonight, or what, what laws is, is regulating that?
So, my understanding is just from MTA is that the Open Meetings Act does not provide any space for minutes to be tabled. Again, that is what I heard from a conversation that Lisa had with someone at MTA, and, you know, by all means, don't, don't approve the minutes tonight if you guys don't want to, but it's my understanding that the intention is, is that in the very next board meeting, the minutes should be edited in, you know, together in public, and then, and then approved.
Yeah. I, I'm at, I guess I don't want to put you in any, you know, I, I understand the MTA gives you the response that they give, so I, I don't want to put you in a weird space, but, um, I guess my thought is with just, kind of just, again, like what else has been said, just the sheer volume of the minutes, I think that if there is an appetite from the board to go through it line by line, to make sure that things are, are square, um, that might require a, a whole work session to itself, and, um, without us having gotten to it today in our work session, perhaps we should dedicate a work session to that, to that cause, um, or a special session, whatever, whatever works best, but to just kind of ask, I think right now, to kind of put us under the, the hammer and say, approve it now or forever hold your peace, is just, that's just kind of a weird space, and I'm not faulting anyone for that, that's just the predicament we're in. So, um, you know, I, I'm just curious if, if there is a, uh, maybe, I, I don't want to assume for anyone, but is there a, uh, an appetite for us to just have a whole other session dedicated to this? Because I, I would certainly be in favor of, uh, possibly tabling until the November first meeting, where we could then use that work session, or if we need to call a special sess- special session, say that three times fast, um, where we could actually work it over then, between now and November first.
Oh, um, so that would, um, require a motion again. I do want to say that, um, we had, um, AI technology for that one meeting, and that was brand new that we've ever had presented, and it wasn't verbatim, because it's not what we said, but that's what they heard, the technology heard. Um, it wasn't set up in a format for motion and supports like we normally do, so those minutes were totally, um, new to us, and, um, everyone agreed that those, that was not a good form of minutes, so there's several kind, there's several statements in there that are so inaccurate and untrue by myself and other people, and the speakers, and the names are wrong. It, it was, um, so those were dramatically different, John, than what we've had in the past. So, what I hear people saying is that to leave it on table and then have a meeting to go over the audio and the minutes.
That, that is what I'm suggesting, just to be clear.
Okay, well, I think what my discussion was that to call a special meeting, to read, to go over these minutes, um, my question is, can we approve them at that time, because it would be a open meeting where you vote, so we can get this process done, because, like again, at this point, I understand the act, as far as, you know, you're supposed to approve the minutes at the next meeting, but at this point, we already missed two, right? You tabled them. Um, I don't even know if I was here last time, because I got sick, but at this point, we gotta do a correction. How can you approve minutes that are not official? And I'm not blaming the township, whatever, but it just, some of that stuff was on those, those minutes. Couldn't figure it out, just couldn't figure it out. So, I, I'm just saying, I feel comfortable. If we call for a special meeting to go over the meet, the minutes, and, and we, if it's, it is a public meeting, they can listen to it, we're able to vote, not to carry it on to the next meeting, just for discussion, this meeting, special meeting we have, not as a discussion, but actually to clarify it and vote on it.
All right, so.
But it have to be a special meeting with public, to the public also. Is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah. At this point, we're past, we're past the tabling thing, because it, it, it's not, it hasn't been approved. So, that was just my discussion. I'm not saying do it. It's, it's the body's decision, but that's kind of what I'm.
Well, in order to do that, we need a motion to do that.
I understand.
Okay, so, we can leave, I believe, leave them on table, and then table. Okay. So we can leave, I believe, leave them on table and then table the October 3rd minutes with the understanding that we're going to have a meeting and approve them all at a special meeting. Is that what I heard? I mean, I think that's what I heard three or four.
Yeah. So when would that date be? Will it, it'll be determined?
Well, we, we would have to get calendars and.
Okay.
Do you have, I believe, Madam Chair, you have a certain amount of time to call a special meeting?
Correct.
Then after that, it will be posted that you have to come?
Okay.
Is that correct?
That is correct.
And, and I guess the clarity also is to hear from our attorney. And we've heard from him tonight that he might be reaching out to them also. What's another group? MT?
Michigan Townships Association.
Oh, Michigan Township.
Madam Chair, I would just offer that I hear what everyone's saying and I, my preference is still to, tonight, go through these minutes. And I just want to address the, the AI transcription. Like, the transcription was added as a supplement to actual minutes because we were asked to do verbatim minutes for the whole board meeting. And so I understand that. We all agreed, including myself, that that is not the preferable method because it, it doesn't make any sense to do it that way. But that was kind of the point of showing you that it doesn't make sense to do it that way. The same way that it doesn't make sense from a management perspective to ask your staff to do verbatim minutes. So tonight, I am prepared to go line by line through the meeting minutes. And that would be my preference so that we can get this work done.
Madam Chair, can I make another suggestion then? Can we, we could just come out of this one agenda item, come back to it and continue with the regular order of business and come back to it. So we'll get through and then if we want to stay here and hear the minutes and read them, what we do. But I think it's important that we continue with the other business and possibly come back if we cannot get a decision.
Sure. I can appreciate that Clerk Rose prepared to do that tonight because you had a chance to, to have that. That information was not shared with us. So at no point in time did you let the rest of us know that, I've talked to MTA, this is what they've said, be prepared to sit and do as long as this meeting is going to take. So I can appreciate that you, that you had that knowledge. That knowledge was not shared with the rest of us. And I think we're all trying to make the best of what has been difficult for the last couple of months. I don't know that anybody, I'm personally not trying to be hard on you or your staff. Staff is going to get involved when we're not clear about what we're expecting to do as a board. I emailed you and said, I am willing on October 5th to help set this out and to work with it. You're very busy. The nine day thing is putting a lot in your lap. I get all that. But I feel like we're being forced to say we've got to do something that I don't feel comfortable doing. So if you want to make a motion that will approve them, the motion can go the way it's going to be. Maybe it's not tabled, but maybe it'll, maybe there'll be support, maybe there won't. But that's hard to hear when it is eight o'clock. The packets aren't ready until the end of the weekend. I have spent a significant amount of time going through the minutes, line by line by line, on a computer, which is not easy, trying to figure out, I can't circle things, can't underline things, I can't do any of that kind of stuff. The August 5th, the August 15th meeting, when it didn't upload to the site and residents couldn't see like what the resolution was going to be, they didn't have access to it. I said, I'm concerned about that. I communicated that to you. I said minimally, I think we should have the paper available so that people can see. People don't do everything on computers, at least not all the time. And when I'm got to go through things line by line and I'm editing things, I want to see it in my hands to do it. So again, I appreciate that you're ready. But that puts the rest of us in a really rough spot because that wasn't communicated to us. If that's what you want us to do, you want us to support you in doing that, I guess we can say. We'll sit here all night. I mean, it's going to be hours to do that. It's not going to, if we're going line by line with three packets of minutes, we are not getting out of here probably before.
Two o'clock.
Yeah, we may be here all night. We could be here all night. We don't know that. So it just seems, it seems, I'm just frustrated by that, period. And I have tried to do my best sending you things. I will not do that in the future. I will make sure that I bring it here so that I can share them publicly with everybody. I have done my best to read things and try and send things to you. But again, when an audio isn't uploaded and there's a question in the minutes on the weekend, how do we reconcile that? How, how does that get reconciled? So the audio is available now. It wasn't last night when I looked at it and I tried to reconcile something. And again, I'm at work all day. So I can't get on and check minutes or check audio when I'm teaching a class full of children. Like if it's not up by 9:20 in the morning, I'm not able to check that again. And again, I'm willing to do the hard work. I'm willing, if I've got a question, to go read them. I'm willing to go listen to audio to see if it's a good match. And I have questioned the idea of like, so what happens when someone's typing a synopsis? What happens when someone's deciding what comments are going to be there? Tonight, we had residents who urgently are asking us to do something, like what's going to happen? Various people showed up and they're worried about their apartment. Like, that's more than what they're, they're expecting us to have more in our minutes than that. And so we don't have a good policy for what happens. And yes, it is, it's also unfair, I think, to characterize it. There's been no concerns with minutes all along. I mean, this is only my first term. But if I went back and I checked on the regular, I have submitted things over time, over four years, where I've submitted exactly as you asked us to do. If there's a problem, please email. Now you're telling us, don't do that. We need to bring them publicly. I'm prepared to make that change. But again, to tell us midstream to do something is not a fair, reasonable thing to do to us as colleagues with that. And it's going to be harder on staff. I, I, I am being generous when I say I think our staff, I say on the regular, our, we have great staff. They work hard for our residents. Part of my concern with the minutes is that often some of what's in the minutes doesn't even demonstrate the stuff that's been done on behalf of the staff. But the staff is going to have a harder time if we can't agree what goes in a synopsis, what we're thinking should be in when the public comes out to comment. Like if, we, we need to be clear so that whoever is doing that knows, okay, this is what the board is thinking in that way. Even that's not clarified right now. So if we go line by line by line and we disagree about, well, this should have been in the synopsis, this shouldn't have been in the synopsis, we don't have any kind of rulebook or guide to make that decision, then it becomes a subjective decision, which I'm concerned about. The subjectivity of how somebody feels about any particular thing. We should, as seven people working for the residents of the town, should be able to come to some understanding when it's not a hot button issue about what we're expecting to happen.
So in order to move, Mr. Trustee Newman?
Can I make a motion to have a special, special session to go over these minutes?
Yes.
Okay. I, I make a motion that we have a special session to go over these minutes.
Can you specify what minutes?
The August 15th minutes, the September 19th minutes.
And the October 3rd minutes?
Yes. And the minutes of the Octo- October 3rd work session and regular meeting.
So motion by Trustee Newman?
Support.
By Swanson to set a special meeting to go through and approve the minutes that were listed. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Row, motion carries. Statements and checks and the treasures report.
Madam Chair, I think you have to post it, I mean.
Twenty-four.
You, you have a couple of days you have to post a special meeting?
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four, we deliver the agenda, I think twenty-four hours. It has to be posted eighteen hours.
Okay, eighteen hours, twenty-four, okay.
Can we do it after the meeting or towards the end of the meeting, Debbie, so we can continue with this?
I, I.
So at the end of the meeting, we'll get people's time. Statements and checks and the treasures report.
So moved.
Motion Eldridge?
Support.
Support Row. Any discussion? Hearing in? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Attorneys report?
Madam Chair, in regards to the previously filed lawsuit against Lilly Investments and Men Like Us, that lawsuit has now been dismissed. Mr. Lewis was the subject of an eviction hearing by the landlord, Lilly Investments. He left the building October 4th, thereabouts. And so that issue has been resolved in the eyes of Judge Connors. There was an order entered that Lilly Investments will not re-lease that property to Mr. Lewis or any organization that he is involved with. And they will also have to go forward and make sure they're in compliance with zoning. They may need to get a new C of O depending on what it's used for. But I just want to say, right, from what, from our perspective, I say ours from the legal counsel perspective, there was an awful lot of, at times, unfounded allegations that were made that this business had been targeted or singled out. Totally untrue. Facts came out during the evidentiary hearing as to the number of violent assaults that took place at their club, both inside and outside, as well as the videos that were obtained, some from neighboring businesses, some from DTE, some from the Men Like Us Club. And absent the township naming Lilly Investments as a defendant in this case, I am of the opinion, so as Township Attorney Dennis O'Callaghan claimed, that Lilly Investments would have not initiated eviction proceedings but for them being named as a defendant in this lawsuit for reasons that I cannot fathom. As you are aware, in their separate lawsuit, they claimed they were owed over $85,000 in back rent, which meant that they never paid rent, maybe beyond just one or two months at the most. So the bottom line is, is that the township went to a great deal of extent, of expense and time and resources to achieve the purpose. But at the same time, I just feel that the Township Board also was castigated unfairly that night on August 15th and other nights in regards to the motivation, when it was clear as to what was motivating that lawsuit that was approved by this board unanimously back in May. It was basically a public health, safety and welfare issue. And it came out the way that I think it would have came out anyways. But that lawsuit has now been dismissed and that club is, is no longer at that location. In regards to Galton Village, you probably have driven, you probably have driven by and seen that that is pretty much a vacant piece of property at this point in time. The fence is still in place that Homrich has left behind. We have had one meeting internally in regards to how do we secure that property going forward. And there's various tasks that have been assigned to try and come back with a plan. One of those tasks also involved reaching out to the owner of the four acres that's also vacant, is also part of the Galton Village proper. In other words, the total vacant space over there is 17 plus acres. Thirteen plus acres was owned by GV LLC, the defendant in our case. The other four acres is still owned by another individual called Galton Village LLC. And we are going to have a meeting with that individual this week to ensure that all of us maybe are on the same wavelength in regards to the fact that we are still, we still have the legal authority to ensure that property is maintained and free, and free from any type of blight, trash or debris. And so that meeting will take place on Thursday this coming week. At the meantime, Jason has been also working with Accounting Director Giovanna Neal and gathering all the financial documentation that would support Attorney McClain going back to the court, seeking a money judgment on this property to ensure the township's interests are protected. I believe also that Jason has also drafted a letter that we discussed about going out to the Galton Village residents and hopefully it can be posted on the township's website explaining that the process has been completed from a demolition standpoint. But the township does not own the property. Township is going to maintain some, some degree of vigilance or a high degree of vigilance in regards to making sure it does not become a dumping ground or a racetrack like we've seen in other locations. But at the same time, if and when a buyer steps forward, and if and when a plan comes forward, there would be public hearings to ensure that the residents know first and foremost as to what may possibly be built there in the future. Right now, I think information is important because there's a lot of misinformation still going around where people are under the mistaken impression that the township owns that property. We do not own the property. And while we have been very, very, it's been a long journey to get that property, that building demolished. And in fact, I know tonight we have the adaptive reuse ordinance before you. And I think I wrote many letters about the Walmart property over there in Ellsworth Road as being what I was referring to as a possible Galton Village 2 in the next 10 years, that that property was not redeveloped. And that was one part of the adaptive reuse discussion that I wanted to emphasize myself is that it's the commercial properties that I think right now pose some of the biggest, I don't want to say threats, but the vacant buildings that are sitting there, they almost become demolition by neglect over a period of time. In regards to Dominion Properties, 900, 924, 940, Jason has forwarded to us via the cloud quite a bit of history in regards to those properties that has, have been downloaded by our, our office in regards to timelines, land uses, current zoning. Jason has also reached out to some of the residents on Hawthorne that have been very, very concerned to let them know the township has authorized litigation. And I think they, the email I received or Jason received, I saw a copy of it, they, they are very appreciative of knowing the township is moving in the right direction. It just may take a little bit of time to assemble all that, but, but the process is underway. And then probably in conclusion, this is my own observation. I wrote a letter yesterday in regards to the weekly police reports for the last two weeks. I did send copies of that to the trustees emphasizing what appears to be just a continuing number of firearm violence-related incidents that are, that have occurred during the last two weeks. Very, it's very alarming when you have reports of shootings that emanate from a passing car or shootings that occur in a residential property. We have a situation where one gun was taken into custody up here at Ypsilanti High School. And so I have asked Lieutenant Pelletier, and I continue to impress him. And so I have asked Lieutenant Pelletier, and I continue to press him going forward in a positive way to at least give the Township at the right time and accounting of what came out of those weapons that were seized. So far to date, there's been 66 weapons that have been seized, and I really want to know from the Township's standpoint what crimes, if any, were those weapons involved that were seized, what charges, if any, were authorized by the prosecuting attorney regarding those weapons that were seized. And the reason why I'm asking that question is because we all know from what happened back on August 25th, when the deputies stopped a vehicle for a traffic violation, they seized four firearms, one of which was loaded, and later on, it was determined that three of those handguns, of which were stolen, were involved in three separate shootings, one in Inkster, one in the city of Ypsilanti, and one in the Township. So it's important not only to get the information that it tells us how many weapons have been seized from various interactions with the police, Washtenaw County Sheriff's Department, but also what is the end result from the seizure of those guns? Can they be linked to crimes that were unsolved or the weapon wasn't found? We need to know that information. And so it's troubling when you read those reports, and I know that you guys had your meeting yesterday when I was writing that letter, the Police Services Committee, but it's just, I think it's important for the trustees to be aware of those weekly incident reports as well. So when I see ones that involve firearm violence, I'm going to continue to bring those to your attention because it's very important.
Thank you, Mr. Winters. Any questions or comment?
I do just want to say that someone from McKinley was in the meeting earlier and heard the comments and is going to help schedule inspections right away. So that's good news because we were trying to get information to the ordinance department, so they're actually going to get together tomorrow and figure out a schedule to get the Aspen Chase in particular, the addresses that were given, so.
Are you saying other folks?
Yes. Yeah, they heard the comments. I know. So that's good to know.
Thank you, Mr. Winters. Under New Business, we have the first reading of Resolution 2023-15, which is proposed ordinance number 2023-506, an ordinance to amend Articles 2, 5, and 11 of the Ypsilanti Township zoning ordinance.
I have a, yeah. Thank you. It's easier. I have Resolution Number 2023-15, a resolution amending the Ypsilanti Township zoning ordinance in reference to proposed ordinance 2023-506, whereas the Township Planning Department staff completed a detailed review of the Township zoning code, and where at its regularly scheduled planning commission meeting held September 26, 2023, the Planning Commission held a public hearing, whereas the Planning Commission for Ypsilanti Township recommended approval of the proposed zoning amendments in the Township zoning code to the Ypsilanti Township Board of Trustees at its regular meeting September 26, 2023, which changes can be summarized as follows. Section 2, Article 2, Section 201, Definitions: defining adaptive use is a list of definitions in the Township zoning ordinance, too. Article 4, Section 420, Use the Table. A, add adaptive use to the land use table for the GB or General Business District, NB, the Neighborhood Business District, and all of the one-family residential zoning districts. Three, Article 5, Section 504, Neighborhood Corridors. A, add adaptive use to Use Group 5. Four, Article 5, Section 505, Regional Corridors. A, add adaptive reuse to Group 5. Five, Article 5, Section 507, Design Standards. A, add alternative design standards for developers. Six, Article 6, Section 1155, State-L licensed Residential Child and Adult Care Facilities. A, removing specific reference to state licensing rules and simply referencing, in quote, "state of Michigan licensing rules," in quote, "to avoid amending the ordinance when law changes." Seven, Article 11, Section 1167, Adaptive Reuse, adding a new ordinance to facilitate the conversion of older economically distressed buildings to a viable new use. Now therefore be resolved that the Charter Township of Ypsilanti Board of Trustees does hereby approve ordinance number 2023-506 as attached by amending articles of the Township zoning ordinance as noted, replacing it with proposed ordinance number 2023-506. I would so move the resolution.
Motion Row, support Eldridge to approve the first reading of the resolution. We discuss this at length in the work session.
I'm happy to answer any follow-up questions or any questions that you may have had. Jason Icoangeli, the Township's Planning Director.
Some of the issues discussed will be looked at.
They will.
This was approved by the Planning Commission, and it will have two readings if approved on the first reading. All right, this is our ordinance, so we do roll call votes. Hunter?
Yes.
Eldridge?
Yes.
Stumbo vote, yes. Row?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Newman?
Yes.
Swanson?
Yes.
First reading is approved under New Business. Number two is request to purchase four Verity print ballot printing units in the amount of $25,676 from HART, budgeted in line item 101252977000, contingent upon the approval of a budget amendment. So, Mo Peterson?
Support Swanson.
Motion Peterson, support Swanson. Discussion?
I was just going to ask a question. If we're going to approve this, and we want to ensure that we're safeguarded, do we want to approve a fifth printer on an emergency basis? If so, I would make that friendly amendment to add a fifth printer at the additional cost. I don't know what that total would be at the moment.
Madam Chair, the, I could tell you the total cost, Stan, if you'd give me one second.
So, Row? Do you think that's a good idea?
I think that having a backup is great. Like, I don't, you know, it does make me uncomfortable, the idea of like, I mean, it's very unlikely that all four of them would fail at the same time, or, but, you know, like, I like, I like having extra backup stuff. I just, you know, when I brought this forward, I just wanted to try and be conservative in that amount. But to do that, if we added an additional, it would be an additional, yeah, but then you'd need one of each thing, so $6,419.
$6,419.
$6,419 in addition, so that would be a total of $32,095.
Trustee Swanson?
Are these things that have been used before the nine-day? Have these been in use before the nine-day rule?
Not here in Michigan, but to my knowledge anyways, but they have been used in other states that HART supplies election equipment to. But it is, it's new. I've not, I have not touched it or used it myself yet.
Okay.
How many, this is for the early voting for February, right? Not November. How many people do you, how many voters do you estimate to, that will be able to use the machines? I mean, you know, if there's a high amount of traffic, then there would be that risk. But if there's not, but, you know, it is presidential.
It's really so hard to say. I think that the county wants us to predict somewhere between like 15 and 30%. I think that's crazy high, but like, maybe like 10 to 15%, but it's so hard to predict because, like, if you think about early voting and the purpose of it, it helps give security to people who feel uncomfortable about their ballot sitting in an envelope somewhere or putting it in a drawer somewhere, and so this really allows them to put it directly into the tabulator. And so there's, you know, more, most of these people, if I had to predict it, are going to come from our in-person voters, but that doesn't mean that, you know, people absentee voting at the counter all the time are also going to come in to use these. And so that would pull from some of the numbers from your absentee voters. So it's really, like, it is very, very hard to predict who and how many people will use these.
Okay.
Yeah, it's really hard. I'm sorry, I know that's not the answer you wanted, but.
With the other people who've used them, do we have any idea, like, the average lifespan of a machine like this?
I did not ask that particular question. Usually when we have these HART equipment, we have service to them for 10 years as a standard, so I would anticipate that at minimum 10 years, but likely longer as long as they're well-maintained and prevent, you know, if nothing else changes in the law, but it's hard.
So is the pleasure of the board to add another one to the purchase? Yeah, we have.
You and Gloria?
I have Peterson and Swanson.
Yep, that's what I have. Yes. Friendly amendment to add one additional printer and barcode scanner and flash memory card.
Thank you for that clarity.
And just for clarity, we want to make sure that, I think if we submit additional ones to, there's, according to Kirk Prophet, our lobbyist, high probability of reimbursement, so I think if we add another, yeah, that's what you shared before, so, and paper and stuff, I don't know if you want to add that to the, whatever you submit to the county for reimbursement, I don't know if you want to do that or.
Yeah, in the, once, once we get through this election, while it's small, it still is also a process, so I'll really dive deeper into that after November, but yes, we'll submit all the things.
Right, I think your intention is just to see if they can get reimbursement, and the updated memo is in the board packet. It is from HART. My understanding it's a single source, right? Because that is what the county is using, so they can, I don't know, upload whatever they do for the system. So this is a single source as well, and I'm not sure if it's going to come back to the board about creating the polling locations, if we have to do that or not. I'm not sure of that process either, but the two voting locations are, will be, one will be here, like the county plan had, the other one would be at the community center. The only concern with the community center is if some, is the construction. So we just have to make sure, and if we have to amend a plan, I think Clerk Row has that ability to do that.
Madam Chair, that's the only voting places for all elections?
For all. Or early voting only. So you'll still have your absentee voters. Okay. And the new.
I got it for early voting, just those two precincts.
Yes.
And then after that, it'll be all the precincts will be open.
The polling locations are still available, absentee is still available. This is another option to be available to the public, and Heather and Stan and I met, she described how after people vote that day, because there's nine days, she puts them into a ballot bag, and they're sealed, and taken to a safe location that's locked up, no one has access to, and then they're brought out the next day.
The only other thing I want to add, everything Supervisor Semo says is correct, and I know that you had shared a concern last time, Gloria, about like, well, what about at the end of the night? The tabulator is suspended, so you don't act, like, it will be impossible to tally those votes until the end of Election Day, and it'll be, the tabulators will be programmed that way, so I just want to make sure that no one thinks, you know, like, we're not going to have any inclination of who's winning the election along on those nine days.
And like I said, Treasurer Eldridge and I met with Clerk Row, and we said, we'll help, whatever you need to do, and she's going to use temporary employees and whatever staff.
The busy elections.
Yeah, for the big ones, yeah, whatever, the busy ones. So we've been talking and trying to work together to figure out a good plan forward. I'm kind of excited about having in-person voting, early voting. I've heard about it, I've read about it, but I've never actually seen it, and there are a lot of people that vote absentee that do not want or trust the envelope that it's in. They don't, they think we look at it, which we don't. February is an odd election. You have to declare your party. It's either going to be Democrat, Republican, or Independent. People get very angry at that request, but that's required by Michigan law. So going through the process is going to be interesting to see how people react in the polling location here. It'll probably be similar to what they say, so it's going to be interesting, the whole election process in February, if the Republicans have it. I read that they might not have a primary. Have you read that? Yeah, in caucus or something, I don't know, but. Yes, Javanna?
Javanna Neal, Accounting Director. I do want to ask if you would like me to do a revised budget amendment, because the only thing I have on the budget amendment is for the purchase of the four tablet, what are they, printers? I only have four. So if you need, I would need to increase the budget amendment amount, so I can go quickly do a revised one and bring it back down if the board pleases.
Joe?
We can do, just do, read it, right?
Yeah, I could just read it.
And just change the numbers?
Tomorrow and update it, just so we, so you don't have to go do it now.
All right, do you want the, did you write the numbers down?
I did, but I'd love yours just to verify that I'm right.
All right, I just want.
I'll come get it from you.
So we have a motion and support to approve the purchase of the Verity print ballot printing units, five of them, in the amount of.
Thirty-two?
Thirty-two.
Zero ninety-five dollars.
Zero ninety-five.
$32,095, and submit for reimbursement for that through the county. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is request to approve the amendment to the service contract between Washtenaw County and the Ypsilanti Township, senior nutrition contract dated October 1st, 2022. Mo Peterson?
Support.
Motion Peterson, support Hunter. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next item is request authorization from Limno Tech to submit, permit application materials for sediment sampling on Ford Lake. So move. Motion Row? Support Peterson. Support Peterson. Discussion? We discussed it a lot in the work session. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next item is request authorization for circuit court litigation to abate a public nuisance located at 2850 Apple Ridge, which is budgeted. Mo Peterson?
Support.
Motion Peterson, support Eldridge. Discussion?
I just wanted to clarify a question.
May I?
Or a conversation piece, I guess, from the work session, which was Attorney Winters had made a recommendation about having, was it a meeting before going with litigation? Is that part of this, this motion? Is that part of this?
What I recommended is that the board authorize that we would prepare the lawsuit, but that we would not file the lawsuit until we had that meeting with the homeowners and representatives to see if there was any opportunity to resolve this short litigation. If the conclusion was remain unchanged, then the suit would already have been authorized and prepared.
Thank you.
Our goal is to compliance, you know, yeah, and I think the resident, well, I know, the residents in the area. And I think the resident, well, I know, the residents in the area will be happy to see that vacant home of 10 years to be occupied, and I think the owners would also like that. And I was thinking about what you were saying, and it's probably a family homestead and means a lot, you know, to the family, so. Our goal is just to make the neighborhood better and to get people in housing, so.
Compliance is always a better thing.
Yes, sir. All right, we have a motion and support. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number six, request to set a public hearing for Tuesday, December 5th, 2023, at approximately 7:00 PM for the 2024 fiscal year budget.
So move.
Motion, Row?
Support Peterson.
Support Peterson. Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number seven is Budget Amendment 14. Clerk Row?
I have a motion to amend the 2023 budget, Budget Amendment 14. I'd moved to increase the general fund budget by $32,095 to $14,812,921, and approve the department line item changes as outlined.
There's a motion?
Support.
Questions? This is to purchase the Verity printing ballot, printing units for early voting. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Under authorization and bids, we have the request authorization to seek sealed bids for the renovation of the Green Oaks Golf Course bathrooms. So move Peterson.
Support.
Motion, Peterson. Support Swanson. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number two is to request authorization to seek sealed bids for the construction and replacement of the Civic Center carport. So move Peterson. Motion, Peterson. Support Row. Discussion? Hearing none? This will be submitted for reimbursement from the insurance company since the storm uplifted our carport and laid it on its back. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Under other business? Did we have any other business? And board member updates? Other board member updates?
Yeah, I wanted to let everybody know that the New West Willow Association, next month, their meeting's going to start 30 minutes earlier, because it's an annual report meeting of their business. So if you wanted to go, it'll be a half an hour earlier. And then the other thing is that the meeting last night, they asked about the improvements to CRC, and like, what the status is, because I know we put it out for bid, and then we talked about putting it in smaller projects. I let them know that. They seemed happy with that, but, or, they seemed comfortable with that, and they understand that there's a lot of backed-up construction, but it hasn't been on our agenda, so we need to think about what we're going to do about that.
Thank you. Any other board member update? So we'll get times and dates for the special meeting, or the minute review only, and all the audios are on, so if you want to listen to them in advance of the meeting, then take notes.
Yeah, I'm actually just going to, anytime they're not, in the past, before we had this new website, me and Lisa could literally drag and drop the file over, and now we have to submit it to IT, and then IT has to convert it over to some other type of file, and then they have to upload it to YouTube. And anyway, it's, it's much different process now. And so I can Dropbox it all to you guys. That way, if a resident asks you for it, or you want it, you can have the audio. But the adding it to the website thing is, is really not in our control like it used to be. So I just want to add that.
So with the special meeting, will the minutes be just, that's what the packet is? It'll just be those minutes that we're going to be considering?
That's what I heard the board request.
Yeah, that's what, that's what I'm wanting, but so the packet would just be those minutes that we're considering. And so it wouldn't be necessarily hard to get a paper copy if someone wanted a paper copy, to be able to go over and have those edits ready for when we go over.
I can print them for you now.
I would appreciate that. Thank you.
What did you say, in hard copies?
Mm-hmm, you want them?
Yes, please. It's easy to underline things and.
I'll print them for you right now.
All three?
Hang on a sec.
We just need to, we just need to get a date for that. I have a meeting set up with IT to figure out what the problem is, getting it posted, just so we can make sure it doesn't happen again.
So move.
Motion, Eldridge. Support Row. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The time is 7:42.
8:41.
8:42, I'm sorry.